Our next work session is Proposed FY 2024 Budget Revenue Work Session. Mr. Harris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Today officially kind of kicks off our fiscal '24 budget process. And, you know, we have stressed to over the last couple of months that, you know, process is really kind of our key word as we kick off, you know, this season and try not to just trust the process as opposed to, you know, riding the highs and lows of the media reporting that goes along with it. So today really kicks formally off that process, and I'm going to walk you through this. Three chapters to the story. The first one is sort of the national conditions that shape what we do in terms of the budget. Mr. Durkin's going to come up and talk about sort of the local conditions that mirror those and give you an update on those because I think it's, albeit a little bit painful, it's vitally important, I think, that everyone understand that our forecast from revenue perspective is rooted in something that's, you know, very real, and we want to be very transparent in that. So we will get you through that as quickly and painlessly as we can. The third chapter is really what that results into in terms of a revenue forecast for the upcoming budget. And so today we lay that out. It is not a final, final number. I think as our school peers are learning, the state is having a real tough time in recent years producing a budget in a timeframe that's meaningful to anyone. That does seem to be the case once again this year. Fortunately for us on the county side, as you'll see in the tail of the presentation, state revenues are a very small part of what we do. And when they say that there's revenue that's going to materialize, we typically, you know, will sort of a trust but verify approach. And we might put that in. I think if you look at our last few set of budget amendments later in April, we might come back with a little bit of state revenue for the few lines where it affects us, but you're not going to see that in here today. So we're basically just holding that part of it, you know, even to what we've got in the current year. Today's, you're not going to see any expenditure items, not going to see what these revenues are going to support. Again, from a process perspective, that's where we come back in two weeks from today. Up in the room 502, we'll be having sort of an old school, if you will, budget tabletop work session to go through all the pieces and parts from the expense side, but it will be tied to these revenue numbers that are in here today. My chapter, the first part of this, really isn't about what is going to be in the budget, but how we're going to build it. I think these graphs, the beginning part, are very instructive in sort of the mindset, the approach, the philosophy that's being employed to lay out this plan. With that being said, I'm going to run through it again. This is starting at the national level, and then we'll drill down from there. Mixed bag, that's kind of our favorite phrase for this season and really kind of very descriptive of what's going on. The numbers here on all of these slides are somewhat less important than the shape of these graphs. And thing I really want to draw your attention to, I think what really jumps out at me as we look at the data, is the level of extreme swings that we've seen the last few years. I mean, these are all-time series that go back sometimes, you know, 20-plus years, and you really get a sense of how much the economy and all of these indicators that we look at have moved, you know, just in historic ways. That presents a very challenging environment to build a financial plan for you all, particularly when we do it in a five-year window. So we are trying to navigate all of this data. We know things are coming back. We know things are normalizing, and you'll see that in many, many of the series here today. What we don't know is ultimately where they're going to settle or when they might settle. So it's coming back to earth. We're kind of moving off of these COVID supply chain, you know, real, you know, heavy, wild swings, but this is far from a story with an ending. So I think as you see particularly on March 8th, when we come back, trying to lay out an expenditure path that has flexibility, that gives you all options, is a nimble plan that we can, you know, move on a dime if these conditions continue to act in this way. So that being said, first chart period, labor market, again, you see just the wild swings. I'm not going to go through the numbers. And there's payroll employment on the left side. You see the dramatic drop-off there. 20 million plus or minus folks fall out of the employed status during COVID. You can see that we've picked all of that back up where we stand today. And you see unemployment rate at a very, very low level. That's one of the major factors that's contributing to this chart here. The cost, obviously, even the supply of labor is very low, the cost is going to go up. If you add that to unprecedented levels of inflation, the cost of our number-one input as a business, as an organization, schools, county, doesn't matter, is, you know, human capital, and the cost of that input is at really an all-time high. So you're looking at year-over-year change of 5% increase. This is a national standard. But again, it just helps to set the tone for what we're going to see when we come back on March the 8th, making sure that we can be competitive from a salary perspective and retain the folks that we do have, given the scarcity of workers and sort of the expectations and pressures that folks are feeling at, you know, at their kitchen table, as well as recognizing the pressures that our ratepayers are experiencing. So trying to find that balance point amid all of this, you know, somewhat chaotic economic data is a bit of a challenge. Inflation, a good example, you see just the huge spike there. It's still elevated, but it's coming back down. So people say, well, inflation's going down. Well, the rate of increase is slowing, but employment, excuse me, inflation is still, you know, very high, given where it's been over the last few years, and certainly where the Fed likes to see it. And you see the individual components there on the right-hand side. So while it is receding, it's, the growth rate is slowing, it's still something that collectively we've got to be attentive to. We've got to make sure that all of our capital projects and all of our, even some of our operating lines have contingencies built in to deal with, you know, what is still a very unknown inflationary environment. This is a good one, too. This is looking at national retail sales, and the Carolina blue line there shows a year-over-year change of 6.4%. So you'd look at that, you might pick up a newspaper and say, oh, you know, people are still spending. If you take the inflation piece out of it, you know, it's basically zero. So where people are having to spend more, receipts are higher, but they really aren't getting anything more for their dollar. The purchasing power is certainly dented for, not only for, again, for our customers, for the citizens that pay the bills, but for us as an organization, we still have to, you know, write paychecks and build buildings and buy police cars, and our purchasing power doesn't go nearly as far as it used to either. Given that production, we're actually seeing production output starting to pull back. So that's, you know, basically how much stuff is the nation producing? With, you know, real retail sales basically flat, you're seeing firms starting to hedge on the production side. And you see producer price index, that's the cost of basically the raw goods that go into the production process, still very, very high. This doesn't get as much attention as the consumer price index. That's the one we all see when we try to, you know, buy some eggs or whatever the case might be, but this is what the business sees on their side and is still considerably elevated from where it's been historically. Housing, same shape. All of these graphs, it doesn't matter what is being plotted, the shape is almost identical. You see home prices, you see the large run-up, 7.7% is the national year-over-year change for November. Ours was a little over eight, so we really track the national path, you know, very, very closely. Again, it's like inflation. Home prices are still higher, but they are coming down. That rate of growth is falling off pretty rapidly. And then housing starts nationally, not necessarily, you know, locally or regionally, but you've actually seen them fall into negative territory from a year-over-year perspective. So kind of like on the production side, for industrial folks, the housing side has seen a pullback in the actual number of starts that are being put on the ground. Car values, again, a broken record at this point, same shape in this graph. You see the massive run-ups that you all had to face down last year. $30 million of car tax relief. Mr. Durkin will talk about how we plan and navigate that a little bit this year. We did set aside $10 million. You know, the good news is from a, as we predicted last year, and most industry sources did as well, car values themselves have come back down considerably. We are working through with the Commissioner's Office to get that final roll for us for tax year 2023. Again, this is one of those oddities where we are still haven't billed for this in this budget, yet we're, from today's perspective, we're really talking about what happens a year from now. So again, that adds just another layer of unknown. But from those incredible peaks of last year, we do not see those values again. You know, here locally, we use a national set of data that would correlate to this very closely. So those bills are naturally going to come down and follow that path. What we're seeing from a consumer perspective, you know, I think we all know, folks had saved up some money during COVID, they've used up some of that savings. This is, you know, a national narrative, again, not a Chesterfield side, but you see the delinquencies on some of these series, particularly credit cards and some other things, starting to tick up. Savings is burned out, folks may be moving to other sources to deal with some of these increased pressures that they're seeing. And you see the tick up there across the board. And then similarly, consumer sentiment, just so many things that folks are dealing with, so much uncertainty from an economic perspective, even though unemployment's sitting at, you know, almost 3%, you've seen consumer sentiment sort of, you know, subdued, let's say, not falling off the cliff, but folks trying to figure out which way things are going to go, very much similar position as we find ourselves. So again, the numbers in all of these things are not the main takeaway from this chapter. It's really, again, the shape of those curves and trying to build a plan that makes sense against this backdrop. And I think when we get into the expense side next week, that's what you're going to see from us, is a design DNA that's encoded in this budget that you could see this presentation and what Mr. Durkin's going to go through and say, okay, that makes sense for where we have to head. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman. Matt, so there does appear to be a lot of uncertainty, you know, I've certainly read in Wall Street Journal and some other publications about what direction we're headed this summer. And with the trend lines being so volatile over the last nine, 12 months, I mean, how certain are we where we're going, number one? And doesn't it argue for hedging a little bit and having some set aside? We certainly have our rainy day fund, but I guess maybe some additional prudence in how we budget this year?
No, I mean, absolutely. In short, that's the answer. I think the way that we lay out our expenditure path in two weeks will, again, reflect this, I think volatile is a good word there. But again, trying to find that balance of, you know, running organization, making sure that we've got everything we need in place and that we're dealing with those service needs that the community has, but also recognizing that, you know, there's an economic reality for our ratepayers, whether they be, you know, residential, business, whatever the case might be. So we're trying to find that careful balance, we're providing relief in the right spots, also having those contingencies built in and not leaning on reserves. You know, you don't want to come out of the gate, and certainly do that right now. You know, we've got those positions if we need to tap them, if things really, you know, take a wrong direction. But I think you're going to see, again, that the way that we lay out the expenditure path, sort of building on our five-year framework and the way that this organization has always conducted itself, will provide us a lot of that hedge that you referenced.
You see the Fed continuing to raise interest rates, and if so, for how long?
We do. We met, you know, with the folks that manage our SRP plan just last week. They're expecting two more increases, at least through the balance of this fiscal year. So again, that's also a double-edged sword. You know, our interest earnings are doing quite well, Slone Acres having some success there, but it drives up the cost of everything else that we're involved in. So we are anticipating some more ticks there. It's really the employment side, you know, continues to be something that the Fed, as weird as it may sound, the almost overemployed status. So, you know, they've got a fine balance to strike as well, but, you know, we'll continue to monitor that.
Thanks, Matt. I have one question on the delinquency page that showed the percent of balances. Yep, that one. Why was there such a precipitous decline in student loans? Do we know why?
So that's going to be some of, you know, Mr. Holland, as is the case, anytime you see something super weird on a chart, the federal government has had their say in it. So that would be where they held off the student loan payments and other things during COVID. You know, cash, this is the equivalency of cash for clunkers, you know, several years ago. So that's what you're looking at there.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to be sure. For that type decline, you're right. And I agree with your sentiments in terms of balance and reserves and what we need to do and being somewhat cautious as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
With our revenue and costs as well, especially cost, be really cost-conscious on where things are. So I applaud that effort. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to append to that, I do think that that drop in the student loan is not necessarily the change in the student loans outstanding, it's what the federal government classifies as a delinquent loan. I think they have a lot of forgiveness as far as the delinquency factor, not necessarily writing the loans off.
No, writing them down, right.
Correct.
Okay, so they weren't delinquent per se.
I just didn't want that.
And also, yeah, thank you, Dr. Casey.
And the other point, going back to Mr. Winslow's comment, you know, even though the rising interest rates are out there for financing costs, this is where you actually will see the power of a triple-triple-A. Goes without saying, to the degree everybody's borrowing at low interest rates, the spreads between a triple-triple-A and those that are rated lower are much more compressed. As the rates go up higher, the triple-triple-A is much more lower on the spectrum, and then the savings that we could attain compared to what others may be borrowing for is much greater. And again, that's that flight to quality that people want and the sure thing of a triple-triple-A. Doesn't mean, I still would love to borrow at 1.8% interest forevermore, but again, if we're borrowing in the low twos or even three, when others are borrowing at five or six, that's a much greater spread.
And Mr. Chairman, just some people, that's a great comment, Dr. Casey, because, so we're, I think, we're one of 49 triple-triple-A counties or jurisdictions in the whole United States. Now, the county, the number of counties, if you count them all up, and other jurisdictions, is something like 3,200 across the country. So we're one of the 49 who can borrow at those best rates. And I do think that does set us apart in terms of how we approach some of these expenditures coming up.
Thank you. Yep. Actually, we have 3,069 counties, and we're the top echelon of all those counties throughout the nation. So this is something to be very proud of. And I saw that years ago when we borrowed a lot of money at the state level, that it made the difference, having that triple-A, especially when you're building schools and fire stations and other type buildings in the county. So excellent point. Thank you very much, Mr. Winslow. I concur.
Mr. Durkin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey. And just following on from Mr. Hayes, kind of pivoting to the kind of local economic conditions, we are seeing something very similar happen at the local level. The first chart that you will see is the labor market. It is directly correlating to what's happening on the national level. You see that spike during COVID with the unemployment rates. The county unemployment rate at its highest was a little over 14%. But as you can see, the latest reading in December, we are the lowest in the region and below the national and state levels at 2.6%. And we also looked at the average weekly wage across all the industries in the community, and it has grown since 2016 by about 26.6%. So it's good news on the employment side, unemployment being down and employment levels being up, with the wages also increasing. Moving on to the housing market, you can see on the table on the left, the latest data that we have for single-family homes. The number of sales unsurprisingly have went down, days on market as a result have went up, but the most interesting part is the average sales price has continued to increase. And you can see the single-family building permits issued. Following that national trend, they have kind of ticked down since the height of the pandemic. That, again, doesn't mean, you know, when you look at these charts and the continual signal's going down, that doesn't mean we're kind of rolling back, it's just things are just slowing down compared to where they were. Holiday sales is something that we track very, very closely. You can see, if you could have focused on the bottom right-hand of that chart, this really, in a nutshell, tells a kind of mixed bag that we've been starting to talk about recently. You saw the decline in the sales in October by about minus 1.9%. We just got the latest sales data for the holiday season last week, is up 5%. But as you can see, over the last couple of years, it is down around that pre-pandemic average. But again, this is where the kind of difficulty navigating where the revenues are going to go really becomes apparent. When you have those swings up and down, it's trying to kind of navigate through there to see what's happening. It will become clearer as the next few months occur, but right now, our sales forecast, which I'll talk about later on, we are conservatively forecasting that to increase by just a little shade under 1% based on what we're seeing right now. That is lower than what we've seen in years past, but given where these numbers are coming in right now, it's more prudent to kind of hedge back on that than plow ahead with what would have been a typical growth rate in years gone by.
Can I ask a quick question? Sure. When this is local, are we talking the RBA area or just Chesterfield County?
Just Chesterfield County.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gerard, I think if you go back to that chart, too, just when you see something that's going down, as you see about three months or so ago, what I always look, since it's year-over-year, you go back to the prior year and you see the high spike, I think it says 19% in the prior October. So the base itself is still higher than it once was, even though it went down negative. It's just, as Mr. Durkin referred to, you do have the ebbs and flows. When you have a very high prior year month, it's hard to always grow off of that high base going forward every year. Doesn't mean that we've gone down, in essence, from a base that existed a year before.
Moving back to personal property, kind of stepping back to 2023, because this is where the direct impact is going to come right now. As Mr. Hayes pointed out, the values are beginning to normalize. We are working with the Commissioner of Revenue and finalizing those. They are coming down considerably, as expected. But right now, we are not recommending any change in the personal property tax rate. We are looking to finalize the tax relief amount over the next couple of weeks, and then also looking to see if we can provide additional relief, as you all directed us last December, with that personal property reserve of $10 million from our fiscal year '22 allocation. So kind of jumping on the tourism improvement district update that you just got, we are still performing very well on the tourism front. And we are actually the only locality, if you look on the chart, whose occupancy levels have actually came back to where they were pre-pandemic, at 68%. We are seeing that reflected in our transient occupancy tax results. One of the things that is going to change this year is we are moving lodging tax receipts out of the general fund into their own tourism fund. It will create a better sense of transparency of where those dollars are going, and it will also allow us, if we have revenue surplus on that, to be able to invest those into areas such as sports tourism or others that will help promote tourism down the line as well. So moving over to the summary, I really like this slide because it kind of tells a story of how we have to forecast the revenues at different points in the year. Real estate, you heard from Mr. Bonefield last month, the revaluation's been up just over 8.8%. Those are done on a calendar year, whereas we're working on a fiscal year. So in essence, we know, given the data from him, where the first six months will land collection-wise, and then we have to forecast the next six months, trickier given the circumstances that we're in. But we have half of that year of knowledge and then look at prior year trends, where the market is going to look at the next six months. And then on personal property, you know, we're looking at what we can do in this fiscal year and fiscal year '23, but the '24 budget obviously is looking to forecast for a billing cycle that is well over 12 months away. So with this kind of ebbs and flow in the personal property value market, it's just something that we have to factor in and take a conservative approach in how we budget that, which is how we've always done it. Longer term, on the general fund revenues, we went back to 2009. Unsurprisingly, there's been growth there as the population in the county has been increasing. For fiscal year '24, we are projecting an increase in our revenues of 4.6%. That's slightly higher than the long-run average, but given the influx that we've had of federal and state support in the last two years, it is actually down compared to where we were for fiscal year '23, where the revenue growth was well in excess of One of the charts we also look at, especially given the current inflationary environment, is, you know, what is our actual spending once you rip out the effects of inflation? This chart, the gold bar that you see going across, looked at the 1994 per capita spending level. If you look at what we have proposed for fiscal year '24, the per capita inflation-adjusted spend is a little over $2,100, well below that 1994 level. So in short, we are very strategic and conservative in how we do our allocations, and over the years, in terms of real growth increases, we've actually been able to keep spending at a lower-than-historical level. Really quickly, you've all seen this chart before, we are seeing the market turn back to a more normalized revaluation level. Last year, we had about just under 12% growth. This year, we are at 8.8%. The tax bills that will be going out, thanks to your actions last month, the rate is going down from 92 cents to 91 cents to reflect those kind of current elevations in the market compared to historical averages. And then when we look at the rate and all of the expenses and revenues in general, we look at, you know, what is our population growth year-over-year when we're building these budgets as we move into '24 in the five-year plan, as well as what's the inflation, essentially, what's the cost of doing business? And with the rate recommendation, the one-cent cut that you've all enacted, we've brought that kind of growth back in line with where we are seeing with inflation and population growth. The revenue and expense that you will see for '24 is not higher necessarily by a great amount than what you're seeing on that chart there. We're looking at about a 7.8% effective rate of revaluation, thanks to that one-cent tax reduction. Again, going from 92 cents to 91, I will not steal the thunder from Mr. Hayes, but he will be up here giving his presentation about the water and wastewater utility rates, which will still be the lowest in the region. And then just kind of a block overview summary of the revenues, you can see by far the largest component of that is real estate taxes. If you take a real estate taxes, personal property, and local sales tax, those three really are kind of like the workhorse of the general fund. They account for about three-quarters of the general fund summary in total. That state federal number, as Mr. Hayes said, we do not bank on any assumptions that may come out, both from the federal and or state government. We await to see what actions they will take. Those amounts over the last few years have remained relatively stable, and it's certainly not something that we rely on as we build this budget year-over-year. So kind of looking in the tabular form, the net growth is about 4.6%. That translates to about $41.5 million in growth. You can see from there, the real estate taxes are by far the largest component of that growth, at 39.8. With personal property going up, as well as, as Mr. Hayes referenced, Slone Acres investment strategies paying off, we are seeing increases in what we have budgeted for our investment income. Draw your attention down to the last two lines there. Charges for services, that is going down directly as a result of us not renewing the CVWME contract. We usually have that in as a revenue and expense. That is now going out fiscal year '24 and beyond. And then we have a reduction in our use of reserves. We strategically use those for one-time investments, both for us and any transfers to the schools. That is projected to go down by about $3.6 million. So all in all, a growth of about $41.5 million. You can see, as we are building this budget, essentially 99, over 99% of the revenues are already spoken for before we come with the proposed budget. You can see some of the items will go further in on March 8th in terms of compensation, transfers to schools, obligations that we have to take on, contracts, grant funding running out that we need to take on through the general fund. But in essence, over 99% of the revenues are spoken for before we come before you with the proposed budget. So under 1% remains for allocation for any additional funding requests or anything else that the board may desire. Then finally, just a kind of quick calendar update for what's coming. Schools have to submit their budget to Dr. Casey by March 1st. We are waiting any finalized actions from them formally. I believe that will be tomorrow, as well as waiting on the General Assembly. We will have the proposed budget and CIP work sessions on March 8th. On March 9th, we start the community meetings throughout the community, as well as virtually. And then we have the public hearing on March 22nd, with budget adoption on April 5th.
Mr. Chairman, could you put that back up? Yeah, I just want to, that slide is important. So do we have any idea, Gerard, at this point in time, when we're going to get a budget out of the General Assembly?
Personally, no.
And when did we get it? I'm trying to remember last year, and then the years run together sometimes, but when did we get it last year?
It was late.
June, May?
Yeah, we essentially adopted, I believe, without a finalized number with them.
I just, you know, and I don't know, I can't, I don't have my crystal ball up here, I can't predict the future, but it does seem to me we may be in for a similar ride this year. And as we get into, you know, the topics of how we're going to put this budget together this year, I mean, this is a big question mark that we don't have an answer to. And I know that members of the public, as we start our community budget meetings, are going to want to know where we are, but, I mean, this is a big question mark here. And so... And so I just think it's, it's good for people to know that, that we are, you know, we're going to do everything we can do, but this is, this is an unknown that we need to put an input in as soon as possible. So I guess, and I know Natalie's done a great job down at Richmond to try to shake all this loose for us, and I just want to express my appreciation to her for this entire session. She's done a good job keeping the board updated, but I guess we're in for a ride, so we better strap in, huh?
And Mr. Winslow, if I could just reiterate just the timeline too, is, you know, June 5th is the tax due date, as illustrated in the, in the graphic that Mr. Durkin illustrated, but that's not when people get notified of what they owe. So we try and provide that timely notification, hence that's why we try and position you as a board to make an informed decision in early April, so provides the treasurer time to print all the bills with the tax rate that you adopt as part of this budget process so that they can be in the mail timely. So, you know, we in years past have had to put those bills in the mail without actually knowing what the state is going to be giving us. So that's, that's why we err in being conservative and having lower forecasts from the state. Unfortunately, the schools bear the brunt of that lower forecasting tool, because as you saw on the chart before you, on the county side, while we rely upon the state primarily for our constitutional officer compensation board funding, schools heavily rely upon the state for many programs, many mandates, if you will, some of which may or may not necessarily be funded to SOQ standards. So that, that's our challenge we have. What we don't want to do is come back to you after a state budget that is lower than we had thought, so much so and so adverse that we actually have to make adjustments down and take back what is an implied promise of the board supervisors to fund the next fiscal year.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions is just kind of, we may be in a situation of kind of like a double whammy. So I'm curious to know your point, because as far as not just on the state level, but we're also dealing with the federal level. And I'm curious to know, on the federal level, how that may impact the state, how that may impact us? That's my first question. And then connected with that, isn't it true that the state actually already has a budget? And they could decide, okay, we can't make a decision this year and stick with what they already have?
If I could, since I've been doing this since 1990, it feels like the federal budget, which is a fiscal year of October 1st to September 30th, they've almost been in, it feels like a continuing budget resolution since about 1776. But having said that, it's been a long time since the federal government's positioned as well. We are not necessarily as reliant, and we appreciate it, but a lot of the grants, sometimes the things you see that are amending budgets during the year are because of federal grants that are being garnered by us or being renewed by us. So we really even hedge lower on estimates from the federal government, unless it's like an eligibility program of social services or mental health, Medicaid, something that's really in stone as far as eligibility criteria. But as far as discretionary federal revenues, we generally have come before you with those as individual items. But I'll let Mr. Durkin add to that if need be.
I had it pretty much right on the head.
Just go back to the other question with regard to the state. I mean, the state does currently have a budget. They could decide to punt and just say, hey, we're not going to take this on, and we can work with the budget that we have from last year and moving forward. Is that, do I have that right?
Yes. But as again, we don't bank, we factor what we know already, but we don't factor in what may be proposed. To come back to Dr. Casey's point is that we never want to come back to you having to revise something down. If anything, there's always going to be an upside when the state finally does pass its budget.
And the state's creative in its budgetary practices. Again, if I'm the parent to the child, the parent always wins at the end of the day to us. And, and I think it's probably been about 25 years or so since the state, one year in June, said, we are not going to reimburse you for your social service expenses in June, we will wait one more month. And in order to come back in the way the state frames a cash flow budget, it would have to budget 14 months in the social services programs to get back into a recurring cycle. So we never got that month back, if you will. We book receivables and we do accrual accounting, so we know it is owed to us, but the check itself back in those days, that was an awkward month when local governments had to write eligibility checks to social service clients on the hope and prayer that the state would come back 30 days later with the reimbursement of that check.
Mr. Engel.
Do we know what schools' required timeline is to adopt a budget by law?
They have to submit it to Dr. Casey by March 1st.
By March 1st?
Yes.
And then we have to go, we have to have our budget in in April, and the state can put their budget in whenever they feel like it, which leaves us all in the same position we were last year. And quite frankly, I think we all need to work together to change our fiscal year by doing a six-month budget in one year. But that would, so that we can figure out what the state's going to do and we can properly fund and properly budget for, on both sides, for schools and for the county, barring the state making a change in the way they do business, though, we're continued to be required by the state, put in a budget, and schools as well, without the state telling us what's going to be in the budget, and we have to make it balance. So, which the balancing part is good, we, we should make it balance. I'm not against that. But it just makes it very difficult for both schools and the county in this time.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Engel, you're absolutely right. And I've seen it as Dr. Casey's way, I knew when we had to help hire teachers years ago when they couldn't come up with a budget until July in the state during McCullough's administration, we were looking at how to do so, to issue contracts, but you're absolutely right. And, and that's something I think we can hopefully improve on and encourage our delegation to work with the governor and others to get their budget in, maybe earlier than normal. So we could encourage that, maybe donuts and coffee might help as well, we have them out for a breakfast meeting or two. But one thing I want to point out in the prior slide, which I thought was very significant in building the 2024 budget slide, I noticed we had an education minimum increase to recurring transfers to schools of $17 million, so we continue to increase. And when I hear from citizens, they often tell us, hey, education is so important to us, it's so important to our children, our families, and I tell them, we are committed. This board has been committed to funding education, as you can see with that second line item, along with public safety, which is also critically important to the citizens here in Chesterfield County. So thank you for the outstanding work and presentation. And another thing you have on there, not prominent, but you always have to account for debt service as well. You have to account for debt service, which is one that you just can't spend. That's one you have to take out aside and show, hey, we owe this debt, we're committed to it. And I know the federal government is working on that now in terms of increasing its debt ceiling, so he can pay his bills as well. So, but thank you, Gerard, for your presentation.
Bringing the attention to the, the figure that Mr. Holland spoke to, the 17 million, going back in the last three years, I think the numbers roughly, we've increased funding to the schools, I think to the tune of about almost $79 million, including the 17, is that right?
It's a little north of that, but yes.
Sir?
It's a little north of that, but yes.
Little north of that. Part of that, I mean, realistically speaking, for the people maybe watching at home, part of that, number one, is because the cost of, of the schools has gone up, right? With the amount of schools that we have to fund, the teachers, the teachers pay, the personnel, the salaries, the expenses. And so I think it was a year ago or two years ago, we actually increased that in one, one year by 18 million, I think was the number. And also, I think in the last three years, we also gave them about 70 million for capital improvement stuff to get caught up on some of the issues they had, such as the HVAC systems and the security systems that needed to be upgraded. And if you go into the schools today, whether it's Matoka High School, some of the others, you can see that there are new breezeways when you walk in the door, you can't get past it, you have to get buzzed through. So it's, I think, going along with what Mr. Holland said, is, you know, we have had, had to have growth in our budget over the last couple of years, not just on the county side, but also what we've had to afford to the schools because of the increases we've seen, you know, in, in student enrollment and salaries and compensation, which goes back to one of the other slides you showed earlier about how the, you know, the cost of doing business has gone up in the county. Did you have something else you wanted to add, Mr. Winslow?
I just, I think just to add to that, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, when we received all these federal dollars during COVID, many of those dollars went to schools, some in operations, but really the lion's share into CIP. And I know, you know, Falling Creek Middle, which is under construction right now, will be a school we can be proud of, and the Dale District received, I think, half of the funding from, from the federal government we allocated. So, I mean, I think, you know, and I do think, and my comment was going to be, I do think we do need to chart out for folks just a review of where we've been over the last three years, because COVID, you know, has created a time warp for a lot of people. And, and so, but let's give them an idea of where we've been the last three years in a slide, I think is very important in terms of school, school expenditures and spending and, and where those dollars have gone to. Because we can talk about, well, this percentage went to schools last year and that percentage didn't, but what did we do with year-end monies? What did we do with federal monies? What do we do with grant monies? I mean, I don't know about you all, but I feel like every third or fourth meeting, we on this board are adopting some measure to provide additional resources to our school system. And if it's, it's not one thing, it's the other. We, what, two meetings ago, I think it was another $18 million or so to do those atriums like, like the chairman suggested. So to me, we've been responsive to requests from the school division, not just once a year, but throughout the year, every year. And, and so, anyway, just, just want to throw that out there.
Mr. Engel.
We expect the budget schools proposes tomorrow to be very close to 900 million, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the county's budget with the transfer to schools taken out of it is closer to 526 million? Is that approximately?
Approximately.
Fairly close?
Right, yeah.
So as we work to work with the schools, our budget is significantly lower than theirs. And we still work diligently to find ways, because we do recognize that schools have had challenges and they did need the teacher compression, just as our public safety, that needed to be taken care of. And we have worked diligently to address that and to make sure that we can honor that into the future. But when we look at total revenue to both sides, we're really looking at about 900 million proposed by schools to them, and only about approximately 526 million to run the rest of the county. And I think it's important for our citizens to know those numbers as well.
Dr. Casey.
So two things. One, I thank you, Mr. Winslow, because I don't think we do a good enough job on both sides of disclosing all the year-round activities of transfers in, transfers outs, amendments, use of year-end surplus strategies. We work collectively on and bind down expenses and with, or funding through revenues. The second thing, you know, I think this also shows the importance of our five-year plan. We may not give it as much attention because we're focused on the first year of the plan, rightfully so, legally so. But I do think some orientation to all, including the public, of what is the five-year plan? What are the reasonable assumptions? Because regardless of what the assessment growth is, that is not what budgets necessarily grow by. I think the chart that we had up there, that we try and be mindful to as we balance a budget, balance our rates, relief, and so forth, is that inflation and, and the growth of people are, are simple demand factors upon our expenses. And then I think the more we can illustrate that as far as what we're balancing to and appropriating to, and, but also hearing where the needs are. And, and again, the bond, the five-year plan of the CIP in essence is the bond referendum. The five-year financial plan of the county as far as non-discretionary sources is going to be the debt service to fund that CIP. And I think, again, just trying to illustrate the linkage between the two is important. So we really understand what is the discretionary revenues before us for what may be the accumulated needs and initiatives of schools, police, fire, and 25 other departments that have requested needs that are at least equal in total on the county side to what's above the, the revenue sources, and out of respect and similarity to the school side. So we're going to be going through that exercise. I do want to take a moment of personal privilege, and again, many people know, I'm honoring a pledge to my mother to, to take her to Israel while she's alive. It would be a different pledge than when she passes possibly. But having said that, she's of mind, body, and soul, and the tour group that's best suited for her is going to be leaving, you know, in early March. So I'm going to miss my first board meeting since I joined 1990 in Hanover County and my first one here in Chesterfield. I love the budget process, don't want to miss the budget process. I know it is the quote-unquote "the proposed county administrator's budget," but I also like to think it's a collective wisdom and collective input and feedback of not just the five of you before me, but many people in parts of citizens, business groups, and so forth, in balancing a budget. So, you know, in essence, I've, I've written, if you will, the precursor to the budget as part of the process. And as, as many of you have alluded to, this is a process. March 8th is not the end of the budget. March 8th is just simply the disclosure of what is a balanced manner to get things done in Chesterfield that is very suitable for public discussion, community conversations that you all will be having in the month of March, subject to public hearings, subject to an April board meeting. And, and again, I like to think that the relationships between the county and school, all five of you to your five peers, chair, vice-chair to your peers, myself to the superintendent and senior staff, will get this done. We always have gotten it done. But again, the process can be confusing to somebody who's not living within it, and it can be, you know, discerning, if you will, if you feel like you're riding the ebbs and flows of what media tries to do and traditionally does, is try and push schools and counties apart in the state of Virginia, and, and we're not going to let that happen.
Dr. Casey, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. See you next time.